Employment, those types of activities. So it's traditionally architecture and engineering firms that do apply for LCI grants. There's several firms in metro region that have been successful. You can go, we're wrapping up our 2015 grants right now and we've awarded, we go see Powder Springs is planned. Canton has just finished theirs. So there's a wide variety. We just recommend that you find the right people that fit what your vision is for this year.
So we would submit an RFP out to the general council.
I will draft the RFP if council approves this contract proposal and then it will be out for bid, competitive bid.
So low bid wins?
Well, no.
Qualifications?
Qualifications, all things being equal.
Right, and there's also a prohibition of contacting anyone on this council or any staff to try to influence them. So basically, the RFP criteria is very clear as to, you know, who can put in proposals, which if a group wanted to do that, then that would be fine. But there are multiple other firms they would submit and the RFP process would be followed.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next item is Resolution 2016-03, Surplus Property Information Technology. City staff has identified a number of obsolete IT items, including all flip style cell phones and various other obsolete technology items. Staff would like to declare these items surplus, there's an inventory attached on your agenda, and sell them on GovDeals. Once this is complete, we can clean out the old IT offices and use the space more effectively. GovDeals was founded in 1999 as an online auction site for government junk, surplus. They are nationwide and anybody may bid, but only government entities may sell. If you want to look at some stuff, they got all kinds of cool stuff on there. Govdeals.com is the website, if you need a fire truck or a garbage truck or some flip phones, they got them all. Arrangements can be made during the next few weeks. The city manager seeks authorization to handle the inventory and this way to utilize, utilize GovDeals as needed in the future on a case-by-case basis. Is anyone prepared to make a motion on item, on Resolution 2016-03? Motion approved, is there a second? Second discussion?
It's amazing how much stuff is in that room. I was looking at the inventory, it's like 200 cell phones.
You don't need to give anything to Charlotte, just let her know.
You got a rotary dial phone in there somewhere? That'll puzzle the kids forever. All right. First, no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Get that ring played now.
I bet there was and I just never went back.
Like one in a time machine backwards.
I was in awe of all the stuff in there.
All right. The next item is 2016-04. The attached Resolution 2016-04 approves the terms negotiated by the city attorney and special counsel regarding an early retirement action. The city will take, will make nominal contributions to the pension plan over the next four to five years to minimize any negative actuarial impacts to the pension plan. Authorization is requested. An order for the city manager, city attorney to finalize all documents, execute the plan amendment as agreed by the city council. Is anyone prepared to make a motion on this item? Motion to approve, is there a second? Second discussion?
I guess I don't understand why this requires a resolution and it's just not an issue that somebody has applied for early retirement.
Because we're giving them extra money.
Right, okay, so we're changing our pension plan to reflect that?
Making time.
Yes.
Except shouldn't make any contributions to cover.
For one time.
I guess I know that in the early two grants, 18 left and we made them whole, the group of 18. And there may have been a resolution for that. And is the resolution required when you have to make additional funding to make it whole? Sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Further discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next item is consideration action to adopt Defied Benefit Plan Amendment. The attached approves the terms negotiated by the city attorney and special counsel regarding an early retirement action. The city will make nominal contributions to the plan over the next, I know that there's two, there's two different items. This is Defied Benefit.
Special counsel drafted both the resolution and the plan amendment.
Right, this is a plan amendment to the retirement plan. The other approves the term. So there's two, it's the same thing, but two different items that have to be.
What goes in our minutes, what goes in the plan?
This is government stuff, right?
The city will make nominal contributions to the pension plan over the next four to five years to minimize any negative actuarial impacts to the pension plan. Authorization is requested. An order for the city manager and city attorney to finalize all documents, to execute the plan amendment as agreed by the city council. Is anyone prepared to make a motion on this item?
I certainly would.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, William, city manager report.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief note, we've already mentioned it once, but really appreciated the citizens that came out for the chalkboard. For our first effort, it was pretty good. We had 22 that showed up over the two day. We had one morning session and one evening session, with the evening session being more heavily attended. So, thank you very much. As I mentioned, Hunter, our graduate intern, has been heading the class and we were going to be getting emails out to everybody on the parking lot questions they had and he's drafting the report and I hope to have a summary and a report, kind of a presentation ready for you on May 3rd, just kind of tie a bow on that so that you know the results of that going into the budget meetings later in that.
When did these guys stop working for us? These interns?
Hunter actually is going to Beaumont, Texas at the beginning, first week in May, so he'll be wrapping up.
Okay. Why and where is he going there?
He has a job.
Oh, good.
And then Ashley is wrapping up in the next few weeks. But again, it's all tied to the school calendar.
Okay. All right.
The next item is the Oakdale subdivision. If you call, we had a whole subdivision that didn't have a proper plat. We had no legal access to the various infrastructure and the developer had folded and there was no active HOA. It was frankly a train wreck. And again, thanks to the city attorney, thanks to the city planner, I think Tommy was involved in, Tom Morris was involved in that. There were some other staff involved. We've got it all cleaned up and it's ready to go. They have a new, the planning commission passed on the plat and the HOA is now reformed and everything is good to go. So just wanted to get back to everybody and let you know that that worked out well.
Awesome.
On the 125th committee, we had talked about it a couple of times about the fact that we needed to have a meeting and we have a tentative meeting set up on the 28th at 4:00. So just wanted to bring that up. Charlotte, is that on your schedule? Okay, and Mayor Hallman and Michael.
Yes.
At City Hall. And so, and I think also.
Eddie Barnett.
Eddie Barnett, yes. So we'll be meeting that group together and.
That was the 28th?
The 28th at 4:00. Thursday, weekend. I've also been invited to talk to the Zelia Park HOA on the 28th in the evening and I've been asked to make a presentation to, to a group of Hayfield High School folks that are coming in town for a reunion on the 11th of May. I'll be on their agenda for a presentation. And don't forget that we have South Fulton Municipal Association later this week.
February.
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 Yes.
At the Georgia Military College. All right.
That's it.
Thank you. All right, we'll get into department updates, we'll start with Legals this time. Fruit basket turnover, your first, Dee.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Chief, what say?
Mayor, we, as you know, we had a request for proposal out on the vehicles. We got them back last week. We had two submissions and hopefully we bring in the best one, two here forthcoming. They're, they're pretty good options.
All right, David?
Don't know if you have anything new. Hopefully it'll be closing soon, the corner town property. I think we've done everything on our side.
I guess I'll know in their court.
So hopefully any good.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer?
I don't have anything.
Liam?
Monday we'll be doing clean sweep throughout the city.
Oh yeah, clean sweep, don't forget clean sweep.
And next week we'll be flowing the hydrants.
Y'all make sure you hear that, they're gonna be flowing the hydrants next week, so you're gonna have dirty water for a little while, so don't wash your whites.
Monday.
It'll be Monday through Thursday.
Various days.
Okay.
Just wash your water running down the street and that's when you know not to wash your clothes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I made that mistake one time. All right. Fire, we got anything for the fire department, sir? Thank you, George. All right. Bill Johnson?
Mayor, we've already mentioned the plat for Chesapeake and Oakdale. We also, planning commission approved the final plat for Space Max, so they're ready to go. Everything's approved for planning as always. That's all I have.
Very good. Alex?
And Bill's very modest, he did a lot of work in getting that effort cleaned up in Oakdale.
Yes, that was a mine, Mayor. Alex?
Main Street has started sending out emails, thanks to Charlotte, for the top 40 review for South Arts Films next year. So if anybody is interested in volunteering for that, you can get in touch with me or Charlotte. And Main Street also is going to be issuing letters of invitation to the following members to fill their vacancies. Ellen Free, who's volunteered close before on that film review. Lauren Fay from the Academy Theater, Sophia Lou from Vilara and Alexia Ryan from Beer Girl. So we'll be sending those out and then the board will be meeting to do their planning retreat.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. And last, but certainly not least, the writer, Reverend Todd Nichols from the Recreation Department.
Well, thank you, sir. I really appreciate you saving me for last.
I want to give you time to think about all the exciting things.
I was just waiting for my name to be called. I'd like to thank everybody that came out on the night to support the Hayville Exchange Club, 5K walk run, the tennis tournament that was heavily put on by Mike David Simpson and as well as our Spring Fling opening day ceremonies, our parade that you all participated in, our opening day festivities. We had a great day and it was a little chilly, but we all break the weather. And to also reflect on, with our city manager saying, I really had a good time at our citizens' chalkboard. To prove that I had on Wednesday morning and Thursday evening, not only did we discuss the budget, but we also took the time out to talk about some things that my department can do, you know, as well to better enhance the quality of life for the community. So again, just thank you very much for coming out. I'll make a motion with your John.
Todd was always the first that, when I would sit in on the staff meetings before we had a city manager, Todd was always making motions to adjourn. I love a person that wants to end a meeting, Todd.
Jim's not here.
Jim's out ill tonight.
Yeah. All right. Pardon?
Do we have any money?
Of course we have money.
You need some.
All right. We'll take general comments at this time, I'll start on the right-hand side of the room. Dr. Rast?
Make sure that, is the green light on on the mic?
Yes, it is.
Very good, thank you, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
See, Rast, 349 North Side Drive. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of what's going on with the petition for a charter high school. We will be on the Fulton County ballot in May. It was supposed to be April, but they were behind and requested that we ask for an extension, although we did need one, they did. So I am asking citizens, I sent an email to citizens whose email addresses I had last night that had this document attached. I'm asking citizens and friends and former high school, Hayville High attendees and graduates to all please contact the Fulton County Board of Education members and urge them to vote in favor of our petition for a charter high school. We have worked on this laboriously, many rewrites over a year and a half. The founding board, Michael Randman, Alan Hallman, David Hurd, myself, Cynthia Miller, Trina Queen and Helen Pennsyl, it's done a lot of help. We have revisited this numerous times, it has changed somewhat in an effort to get it approved. We have taken out what we thought might be some sticking points and left them kind of generic in terms of the building and the service provider, hoping that those two points, which we were regularly called on the carpet about in the last year and a half, would not keep us within the charter, then we would add those points back in. So I have copies of the document here that have just some of the summary items about what's contained in the petition, as well as all the board members' emails, addresses and contact information on the back. So if you would like one after the meeting, I will give you one and please urge everyone to know to ask them to support this endeavor.
When is the meeting in May?
Oh, it is the executive session in the May of 10th and the board meeting is on Thursday, May the 19th. And all that information is on the back of the sheet, too.
Jimmy, apologize for not knowing, but Board of Education, it's not district specific, so we would contact each?
It is.
Or do we actually know what our representative is?
Well, ours is District 5, Dale B.
Okay.
But everyone votes, so.
So we would email everybody?
Everybody. They believe Dale B would come to find out and we'd hope to be supporting us. And she was here a year ago in June when we actually gave the presentation with Del Anna Paul.
While you're there, I would like to say, as a person that sits on this board and we've sat through many, 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 many hours of meetings, I would like to say without the two doctors in the house, and that would be Dr. Rast and Dr. Retsch, we would not be here because this thing would have died on the vine. It takes somebody working their butt off, hours and hours and hours and starting all over again. And I mean, it's been, it's been a laborious task and we couldn't have done it without you guys, because y'all picked up the ball when the rest of us were out fighting other fires. So I thank you very much for your dedication. Comments on the, again, on the right?
Kevin Lance, 720 North Avenue. I wanted to ask, William, didn't we talk about the cameras at the citizens' chalkboard? Since we're in the T-Spots?
Yes, but as far as it being a T-Spots eligible project, it wasn't that.
I believe.
Yeah, that was in the general fund budget. So it ranked, it ranked as a, as a, as a project on, in the general fund budget discussion with T-Spots as a special allocation of dollars that has to be transportation related.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, we go a Hayville ARPS program, we're doing Alice in Wonderland and John Christian's the director and I'm helping him and we're practicing over at the recreation center on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And I just wanted to let it be known that our play is on.
21st.
It's muddy and wizy.
Yeah, it's muddy and wizy, but 21st.
The rest of my life is on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's like every day of the week. Monday's a Wednesday, we're practicing at the recreation center, but our play is going to be on May 21st. It's going very well. We've got a lot of kids in the, in the community, they're focused, determined, that they're doing a wonderful job. And also, I wanted to thank y'all for the citizens' chalkboard, it's very educational and Chief and, not Chief Morris, but thank y'all so much, we've learned so much and thank you for having the guys there to help us learn what's going on and exploit the different items. Thank you, William, we really appreciate it. I know our group did.
Absolutely.
We really appreciate all that.
Thank you, Ellen. All right, any more comments on the right? Laura?
I don't believe, I don't believe you made a motion on 71. The first reading ordinance of special events.
I stood his first reading.
Didn't make any reading, okay, well, if anybody needs training on how to look up the lot numbers, I have them all right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on the right?
Michael Simpson.
You're on.
That's right. Michael Simpson, 302 Longwood Drive. Tony Paul, that lady.
Sorry.
Musical interlude.
I just, I just wanted to say, and I don't get up here a lot, after working with the city on the citizens' chalkboard and seeing firsthand everybody in on what was going on, employees that lived here and didn't live here coming to the meeting and especially the job that Todd did and Ally O'Brien and everybody else, that although sometimes at these meetings, we feel like we're in each other's throats, I think we need to bury that hatchet, not in each other's backs, but bury that hatchet and move on to the next step. When we worked together, like we did at the citizens' chalkboard, it was amazing to see everybody come together with the same reason, the same thing they wanted to do. Maybe two was three and three was two, but number one was where we needed, number two, we just went on down the line. It was amazing, and although to everybody out here, sometimes it seems that these meetings are confusing and fighting and stuff like that, when it gets to the city, these guys have the greatest heart for being able to do something. And I just, I can't imagine, I've had a meeting with the chief today, seeing some of the things that happened, it's just amazing how they sift through this stuff, because when we get out here and bicker and fight, it affects them. And they don't let it affect them and they get the work done. And so I just want to say, hats off to these guys here, they need a round of applause, they did a great job.
All right, any other comments on the right? All right, my left? Anne?
Good evening.
Good evening.
If all the H-Cops or if you've been through the program, if you would stand up, please. This is not just a few people, this is a lot of people. And we have all had the privilege and the honor of being under H-Cops, under Officer Missy Hughes. And so that has transferred to another person, that person is now finding out, it's a very difficult job. It takes a lot of work and a lot of time. So it didn't feel right unless we acknowledged everything that Officer Hughes put into this program, all the time and talents, the care, the love, how she brought this group together as a community to care about each other, care about this community. I want to make sure that that gets acknowledged, that it's huge, because it's a lot of work and blood and sweat that that lady had put into all of us in this city and the love and dedication. So I challenge us as citizens to be the best citizens we can be, that example that Lieutenant Hughes set for us, and also challenge our police officers for that same dedication for one another, to be honest, have that strong integrity and move forward with everything as best as I can.
Very well stated, thank you. Thank you, y'all, citizens on patrol for your dedication, because it makes a difference when you get on the other side of that fence and see why our men and women in uniform have to put up with. And Missy did a fantastic job with that program and she, she will be rightly missed in that role, so thank you, ma'am. Okay, any other comments on my left? Yes, sir. Robert?
Do I need that?
Yes.
So, Robert Drake, 600 King Arnold. As long as we're telling people about shows upcoming at the Academy Theater this weekend, closes Nova. The story of Bert Williams, who was the first African American ever on Broadway. And so we want you all to come out and check out that show. We had a sold-out house on Sunday. Dr. Sherlene Holmes from Georgia State University came down, Channel 5 came down. So we're bringing a lot of publicity in a really positive light to the city of Hayfield and, you know, it creates interest in real estate here and all that good stuff as well. And then for suit verily, I say unto thee, the next thing that we shall have shall be Shakespeare that shall be improvised. So if you like to laugh and I am a contender, come on down, we will see you at the Academy Theater.
Thank you. If you're still alive when I die, will you preach my funeral?
Sure, it would be an honor.
Yeah. You and I, you and those, you and those characters. Yeah, you know, it's such theatrical flair. All right, any other comments on my left? Frank?
Frank Volker, 3100 Springfield. I don't know if the website has pulled off those maps or those.
Yes.
Is there any way to get an identification of these things, other than just?
I got them. I, I, I did it while I was sitting here, I got all the IDs.
Good to be organized.
All right, any other comments on the left? All right, there being none, mayor council comments, I'll start. Diane, I'll start.
Well, I have a couple of observations from around town. And I unfortunately saw this on, not unfortunately saw it on Hayville Next Door, but the, and on Facebook, the Clean and Beautiful Commission and their volunteers from Portia just knocked it out of the park. I'm sure there were over 20 or 30 people there and if you ride around our town, you will see all of the new lovely mulch. I don't know if you've gotten plants in yet, but there was a lot of trimming and cutting and weeding and it is just an incredible force that Clean and Beautiful gathers to take care of that business. So I thank Sherlene and Jeannie and I think the mayor was out there and lots of, Helen Kellogg and lots of other folks, so I really appreciate that.
Your city manager was there?
City manager was there, too. I noticed he had his fluorescent shades on in all of the pictures. But the other thing is today I attended with the, the city, for the city, the Biz Now Conference, which was a show and tell for the Aratropolis area, a lot of real estate developers and that's two panel discussions. And I would like to say our mayor's name and our city's name were announced over and over and over again. We are on the map and the radar, so yay us.
About to play, my grandson went, is it, oh.
I'm sorry? Okay. My grandson went to try out and he tried out, then he told me he didn't want to be in it. I says, well, why did you try out? He says, because I just got so involved. So, and he reminds me when it's time to go to practice, he says, it takes me about five minutes to go over there, so we need to leave about 5:20. So he's very excited, I'm looking forward very much to seeing that and getting the recreation center going in that direction. Also, I had a number of citizens come up and comment on the chalkboard, I wish I could have come to it, but it's sort of my busiest time of the year and I didn't, but I heard a lot of really good comments about it and I'm looking very much forward to reading it because some of what they thought were priorities, I didn't realize that that's what they thought, so it'll be very interesting to see what they think. And that's my answer.
Joe?
I really don't have anything to add, that's pretty much it at all.
What?
Lee's not here, I don't guess or I don't see.
Lee, Lee's ill tonight.
Okay. I appreciate, Lee met with David and I at the art container, I guess we'd call it, there in the park and really helped us out with paving some areas for entry and exit so we can get that thing up and going and do our art crawls and I'm looking forward to that. And I noticed over the weekend, people eating in front of the Cuban restaurant, which is kind of cool, ride through Hayville and see a bunch of people sitting outside. And so I'm looking forward to all these pieces coming together. And sometimes I get distracted in the problems that you can't avoid, but the big picture on the horizon I think is really bright for Hayville. I think a lot of good things are about to turn, it doesn't mean we can't, we have to still stay on task for the details, but there are so many good things coming, I just think we have to steer very accurately and clearly so that we can keep it coming. Thank you very much. And I appreciate all the people, I didn't come to the chalkboard thing either, but I heard great things about it, not just from the staff, but of course, the residents, the game and anticipated. When it comes to the H-Cop things, I came to several of those when people were getting their, all their things at the end of their class and it was very obvious. still stay on task for the details, but there are so many good things coming up this thing, we have to steer very accurately and clearly, so that we can keep it coming. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the people, I didn't come to the chalkboard then either, but I heard great things about it, not just from the staff, but of course the residents that came and participated. When it comes to the H-Cop things, I came to several of those when people were getting their, all their things at the end of their class, and it was very obvious to me that Missy was like the heartbeat of the thing, and so you're very correct in what you said, and I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will just echo positive feedback on the chalkboard, I thank you very much for participating, I thank the staff for a great job. I think it helps, I, I think that's kind of like the H-Cops for the budget, it kind of shows you the other side of the fence a little bit, and again, we appreciate your participation. Want to say a shout-out to the ribbon-cutting we had for the Arches Brewery Company Saturday, fantastic turnout, we had ribbon-cutting in one, Councilman Demick took care of that on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, and then they had three-hundred-plus people come in and out throughout the day, just a fantastic advance, getting a lot of positive press out there in the Facebook world. The Solis Hotel, we're still riding high from, from that groundbreaking. The Biz Now event, as Councilman Demick mentioned this morning, was a resounding success. Hayville is very much front and center, they consider the Solis Hotel as the catalyst project for the whole Aratropolis concept, so we're very front and center, and as Michael said, these, these things are, these things are things that, some of which, Neil Golden, the project that he announced today, these things have been going on for a decade, it's taken ten years to get us there. So, this stuff doesn't happen overnight, and sometimes we get bogged down in the weeds with the small stuff, but we always have to keep the bigger picture on the horizon, and the kinds of things that are getting ready to happen here are already happening here, that's big-picture stuff, and that's where, that's where I think we all do ourselves a great service if we pull our head up out of weeds and start staring at things from the trees. So, I'm very happy with the direction that things are going. I would like to, the Clean and Beautiful, Portia brought out an excellent group of volunteers, and I mean, they took over, they didn't, they didn't want us to do, they're like, oh, get out of the way, we'll handle this. And they, they made it all over, all over the various beds and everything, and it did include weeding, and it includes some planting, and some mulch, and pine straw and stuff, so it makes a visible difference in the community. So, I thank everyone who came out, a special thank you to Portia. I actually met with Pedro, and we had an impromptu lunch together at the Cuban restaurant, so Pedro was very complimentary of the city, and I echoed our appreciation to him and Portia for the Portia Cares Network, for the great work that they've done, and they've been fantastic corporate citizens to this community, and they make a huge difference in, in this city. Other than that, I appreciate you all coming out tonight, I think we had some good spirited discussion about some issues, and we appreciate your dedication to the city. With that being said, I will entertain a motion that we go into executive session for personnel, real estate, legal.
Also, Lou?
Motion to go in, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side. I'll entertain a motion that we recess. Motion to recess, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, we stand and recess. Thank you for coming out.
I'll give you a second.
Suppose I just give you some money?
I'm going to get you a copy. I'll copy it, I'll send you an email.
Okay.
I'll copy it tomorrow and get to you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in Lee Town, about two or four, but I'll be back by...
Okay, no problem. I'll call you in the end. Thank you.
A lot of that, I'll, 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 I'll,